Okay. The office meeting of the Board of Selectmen's Leader. The record will show that four members of President Mr. Farady was unable to attend. And we're here tonight to speak with the Building Committee about the proposals for the Town Hall.
Could you just pick up somebody for me, please?
We're here tonight to discuss with the Building Committee the proposals for the Town Hall and Community Center. So, I know some members of the Board are concerned of the price and the fact that there might be sticker shock in the community and are concerned about the viability of the proposal. And I don't know if individual members want to speak on that or if the Building Committee can maybe explain to us how the figures were arrived at and give us some comfort with the numbers. But that's basically where we are. We're just here concerned from feedback we're getting and we want to make sure that, you know, we are comfortable with the numbers and the people in town are comfortable also.
Well, our chairperson's not here tonight, so I'm going to defer it to our Vice Chair, Jim, to kind of run our end of the meeting.
Okay. The person, if you didn't know, I'll introduce ourselves to at least the two new people from the Board of Selectmen. That was Kevin O'Neil. I'm Jim Slatery. This is Bob Maderos. And this is Mark Gershman, our clerk. Dinah O'Brien is away on a planned vacation in Europe. She will be back next week, so she has been communicating by email at midnight. So, she's well aware of what's going on. We have made, this is probably about our eighth or ninth presentation to the general public or to different boards in the town. We were delegated two years ago as a Building Committee to study the needs for a senior center and for a new Town Hall based on the absolute needs for the five years previous to that. So, we sat down right away. We did go to a town meeting and get fifteen, uh, I'm sorry, fifteen, 1.5 million dollars to pay for feasibility studies and architects. We then used that money. We did a, put out an RFP. I believe I could have the letters wrong, but we put out a request for, huh?
RFQ.
RFQ. And we went through 12 architects for the Town Hall and about 14 architects for the Senior Center, none of which were the same. We were hoping we would get at least somebody that would, we'd have one architect for some consolidation of costs and everything else, but that didn't happen. We met a couple of times and screened the architects based on their past doing of senior centers or Town Halls. Probably half of them didn't qualify for either one. A lot of them had done remodeling or something like the, in fact, the architect that we have now for the Town Hall is actually doing the Taunton City Hall, which is probably more of a reconstruction. I think they demolished half of it and are trying to reuse, repurpose it. But a lot of seniors, a lot of towns repurposed buildings for senior centers or Town Halls or put on additions, and that's what most of the architects were. We sat down as a board. We each picked our top three choices, which matter of fact, most of us agreed on who the top three were, and then we voted on whoever we chose. We chose, you're going to ask me who they are somewhere along the line. We chose DB, D, V, W architects out of Providence for the Town Hall, and we chose BHA out of Boston for the Community Center. After we chose them, we sat down with them, told them we needed a feasibility study from each one of them to see what the needs of the town were. The Town Hall feasibility study was fairly easy. They went to the 12 to 15 different departments and said, "What do you want? What's wrong? What's right?" And that was sort of a cut and dry situation without too much, I would say, work. It probably was a lot of work, but to me it wasn't. For the Senior Center, we put out a survey online. We had it also in hard copy so that people who maybe weren't electronically connected or were not that great with electronics could do it, and we entered it into the survey process. And we, we took the survey back to see what they really wanted, and one of these signs shows, but during the, during a couple of the presentations, we had the architects here and they explained it. And I believe parking came up as one of the main concerns, and I forget what the other one was, but we had a lot of concerns about activities and space and everything else. So then we went back to the architects and said, "Okay, draw up a building." The Town Hall building was fairly easy. It was so many square feet. Every department needed so many square feet. We also need a couple of meeting rooms. As you as selectmen well know and anybody else who watches any of the meetings on TV, the last two meetings of the Planning Board have been absolutely atrocious. Whatever's going on downstairs filters upstairs. You can't hear what's going on. It's continually interrupted. When we had the people from Bay Street and the solar panel cranberry bug problem, they loaded the Selectmen's meeting with 40 people and they could barely stand in the room. Many meetings are taken out of the Town Hall and we try to use the school. We've used something else, I don't, anyways, they've used multiple other buildings outside the Town Hall for meetings, so there was meeting space needed. So the architect for the Town Hall put in two as one of these plans show, and I can do a song and dance on that later. We incorporated two meeting spaces, one for the Selectmen and another one. Last week, we met as a committee in the snack room of the Town Hall and got kicked out by the water resources people who were trying to meet in the snack room of the Town Hall. And we have been kicked out by two or three other boards out of a room that wasn't meant to be a meeting room in the first place. On the Senior Center side, after doing a lot of research with other towns and dealing with some of the problems within town and talking with Beth Rossi, it was decided to try to change the Senior Center to a Community Center based on the fact that we wanted the building to be used for multiple functions, not just the Senior Center. Why build a building that's only going to be used from nine to five, Monday through Friday? We could use it for elections if the, if the main hall is big enough, rather than having to bother the schools and pay for six police officers to man the halls and everything. You could lessen the cost of elections by holding them in the Senior Center. There was also problems in town as far as when electricity goes out, especially the seniors are more affected than most. The last time the electricity went out, it was a heating problem. We could use it as a warming center. And the time before that, the electricity went out, it was too hot. We could use it for a cooling center. I used to say we could use it for a shelter, but I've been informed by our Emergency Management Agency that even with the new plans, it actually can't be used as a actual shelter, shelter. And this school, because of its kitchen and multiple showers.
The other school.
One of the schools.
Middle school.
Can be used as a shelter and has been authorized, so we had to change our song and dance on that. The other thing that was brought up to us was that the food pantry, which is in the cellar of, is in the garage of the old police station, had to, should be moved out of the building if we want to move everybody out of the building. So we plan on putting the food pantry in the Community Center. There was also Boy Scouts, other activities could be done depending on how the town evolves and the Recreation Department evolves. They could hold different functions within the Community Center, and it just, overall, it just made sense that the building should be a Community Center and not a Senior Center. We were afraid we were going to alienate some of the seniors because they feel they were losing their building, but actually what we were going to do is, in the best interest of the town, and that's why the Selectmen appointed us a committee, to look at what's in the best interest of the town, that we thought it would be better to be a Community Center, to be used by the whole town, not by one segment of the population. So, the feasibility study that came back, he proposed to us a 20,000 square, I think it was 20,000 square foot building, a 15,000 square foot building and a 10,000 square foot building. And I went away from that meeting thinking we agreed on the 15,000 square foot building and came back, and was told we agreed on the 10,000, which was the smallest building that would be feasible to be a senior, to replace the Senior Center and be a Community Center. If we cut it down to being just a Senior Center, I don't think we could make the building any smaller. Because we needed the big rooms for the bigger activities. We needed the small rooms because right now there's only two rooms in the Senior Center. And if you have yoga going on with knitting and with bridge, that's three activities for two rooms. And this particular time of the year, the ARP does taxes for people, so the whole corridor, if any of you have been in the seniors, is lined with people. You walk in the Senior Center and it looks like you're at the return desk at Christmas at Walmart. You can't, you can't go anywhere in the building. It gets very, very crowded. So we needed these separate other miniature rooms, if you want to call them. Plus, we needed a room if we have a podiatrist come in and do toenails and some other things at the Senior Center. We needed some privacy in the rooms. One of the big things I've mentioned at some of the meetings is, I couldn't believe it, I was in the Town Hall one day and the health nurse was giving a flu shot in the corridor of the Town Hall. What kind of privacy and respect is that? Because there was no room in the Town Hall for private, and when you, selectmen, have no real office, office to sit down and do your homework for meetings or whatever. But back to the Community Center, so we, we thought of putting the, in the 10,000 dollar, 10,000 square foot building. We told the architect about the food pantry. He put it, he put it on one side of the building that didn't have a driveway, that didn't have outside access. And knowing how much traffic there would be bringing the food in and bringing the food out, I suggested that we mirror image the whole thing, and we flipped over the building and put the food pantry out near the driveway. And they came back with those three options. It's not like we took the one most expensive option, which was the 20,000 square feet. We took the cheapest, okay, I'm not supposed to say cheap, the most inexpensive option there was. We knew we had the best interest of the town in mind. We studied it. We actually cut a few things out, which we'll add it later, like a bathroom down the end for the food pantry so that if they work on Saturdays, they wouldn't have access to the whole building. They would have access to only one end of the building. We looked at security. We looked at access, and we just thought that we were presenting the two buildings that we had was the most economical buildings, were the most useful buildings. So then we went on to looking at sites while we're, everybody was doing feasibility studies and everything else. Sites were brought up. We were looking for inexpensive sites, land that the town already owns, so we wouldn't have to pay money. And a few other sites were brought in. We looked at a West Main Street site across from the Limousine Service where potty time is, and that site was, I believe, too small for one building. And there's been some question about why we have two different style buildings. Well, when we first went into looking at this, we looked at two different types of buildings. The 20,000 square foot Senior Center was a two-story brick building, but when the architect went to a one-story building, he went to the one-story wood building because it was less expensive to build. It was all on one level. We didn't have to worry about the expense of stairways and elevators and ADA compliance and that kind of stuff. So back, sorry if I'm jumping back and forth, but if something comes into my mind, I think about it and talk. We looked at the, behind the present Town Hall, because of the landscaping and encroaching on the, the Highway Department, we thought if we encroached on the Highway Department too much, in five or six years, you'd be looking for a new Highway Department, and we didn't want to incur any future cost. We were also told about a site off of 495 down by Leonard Street where the Highway, the State Highway Department has a pit way behind there. The town owns some land there. We, we looked at that. Most of these sites I'm talking about were single-use sites, so we would have two separate buildings. We also, was brought up to us the Clemmie Site, the next door to this Town Hall. There was much debate about the Clemmie Site, but Mr. Clemmie wants too much money, and we did not want to incur that expense to the town. And in fact, he was personally asked, and it was just disregarded by the, I mean, we spent, I would say, four months trying to work that out because it would have worked out better to be where all the buildings are together. Another site was on Summer Street down by the VFW. I think it was going to be a land swap deal between Wheaton College wants, who has wanted the street that runs through for many years. And we were going to try to work out a land swap that they get the street and we get the land, but that land is very, 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 very wet. So we disregarded that, that site. I think that's all the sites. Oh, and the last one, which eventually we took, was the Elm Street Site. It was brought up to us that the state was remediating the site, that the Selectmen were, made a proposal two years ago, and they didn't want to get into a deal like they got into with the Shapak dump, having to remediate everything and pay for it and all the complications that went along with that. So the, the state came back this time around and said, "We will give you a clean site. You can have the land." So I guess the Selectmen have, and I could be wrong, agreed to take that site. So the land was available. It also was big enough to put both buildings on and actually have walking pass and a recreation area. So, I would say two-thirds into our meeting, we started seriously thinking about Elm Street. It wasn't our first choice. It wasn't our second choice. It was down the line. So there was some study. There was some stuff done to plan on where to have these. Yes, we, we talked to the architects. They made, most of the proposals you see here have the two buildings together. And these are only feasibility studies. These aren't the actual buildings. When, when we get this passed at Town Meeting, when we get this voted on and approved, we will have to hire an onsite engineer. What's he called?
Owner's project manager.
A project manager. And then we'll have to sit down and hire a, one architect, hopefully one architect. We'll send everything else a bid again. Hopefully, somebody will be smart enough because of the, the size of the buildings that we come back with somebody bidding on both buildings. And we have one architect and hopefully one construction company. Because of the economy of size, you, you know, it's much easier for somebody to come in and build two buildings if it's one company than two companies come in and build two. And I don't know if anybody wants to argue that, but I think it works. So, that was our thought plan. That's what we were going with. In some of the meetings, it was thought of being a Plan B, and there is no Plan B because five, six years ago, we needed a new Town Hall. Five or six years ago, we needed a new Senior Center. There's no Plan B. These, for the, for the structure of the town, I mean, we built two new schools and, and please, I've mentioned the schools a couple of times and I've got brush and rough shot over because I mentioned the schools. But we built three new schools. We built a new fire station, a new police station. We have no infrastructure for our Town Hall and no infrastructure for our seniors. In 10 years, I'm sure the Fire Department will be looking for a fire station in the eastern side of town. So, we have thought about things. We have thought it through. We know, I have, any of the meetings we've had, nobody's said that we don't need the buildings. The biggest thing is the cost, and that's what the people's biggest concern is. The other concern, and the concern of the committee, is to get a, a positive vote for 25 million dollars. The 25 million dollars is a top figure. The 25 million dollars is a figure, we figure we will not get shovel in the ground for two years because we've got to do the process all over again of RFQs for, for architect, for a construction company. We've also got to wait for the site to be clean. I'm hoping that works together. And I have no problem, there's been questions about the site. I have no problem with the site because, A, the people who rule hazardous material are doing the cleaning. They make the rules. If they make the rules, they're going to do it right. So, and I'm sure the Selectmen are well aware of the site, well aware of what's going on, and they would not give us a dirty site. So, we've got that. The, the money figure also includes escalation of cost. What the 10 cent candy bar, okay, what is it? It's a, a dollar candy bar today, two years from now is going to cost a dollar and a quarter. So the two-by-fours and bricks, two years from now, and we've figured in an escalation cost. There's been questions about the square footage cost of the building. The actual square footage cost is for the project. That includes cleaning, preparation of the site. It includes soft goods inside. It includes a complete building. The 25 million is, the Town Hall employees can walk into Town Hall and start working. Maybe. I'm sure there'll be a punch list or whatever. And the Senior Center is the same way. So that's what the 25 million is. Also, if anybody knows anything about, about construction costs and government and towns, we have to pay the prevailing wage. And I'm not bad mouthing the gentleman that got up in my first presentation, but I'm not quite sure he's paying the prevailing wage, prevailing union wage to his employees if he's a private construction company. We all know the difference between union wages and private wages and what the guy at McDonald's gets and what the guy in a union job gets. So, that's the reason for the high cost. We're hoping that we come in lower based on getting one construction firm, based on our other things, but we have to present to the town a true figure of what we believe the project to be. You made us your experts on construction. We are your committee. We're coming back to you to reporting to you. We're hoping that you will approve this because you asked us to be the, you asked us to be the experts. As far as all the online stuff, trust me, I had to go to two waits this week, and I got it from the Fire Department, I got it from the Police Department, and I got it from civilians at both these waits, some of the questions you have asked. But I have actually answered them face to face. I don't do social media. I don't believe in that. You know, if I can't talk to you face to face, then it's not worth talking about.
And Jim, the numbers, that includes the soft costs as well?
Yes.
So that's not only the inflation and the construction costs, the site work costs, and then all the furniture inside?
That's what I, I think that's what I said.
Yeah, it's everything.
But yes, it does. So.
Thank you.
I think we've answered all the questions. We made up a Q and A sheet. Some of you didn't get it, although Beth went around while I was talking, so you could wake up and pass them out. I think this is the best deal for the town. I think that the bottom line here is, there's, there's no sense putting this off for a bunch of reasons. Number one, we're in an unsafe building. You've got your own employees in a uninhabitable building that's not even legally occupied. We have people coming up to the Planning Board not getting occupancy permits, but they're meeting in a building that's not having occupancy permit. And the Senior Center is a multi-purpose one-bay gas, fire station that was a one-room schoolhouse that's not feasible. So, I think putting this off is just putting it off. It's going to cost more, I think. If you put this off, you're putting it off for five or six years. You're going to run into the, what I think is the fire station, maybe in another 10 or 15 years. Dr. Vieta may want another building. I have no idea what his future plans are, but, I mean, I know for a fact, having listened to, to the present Fire Chief, that they want another fire station in east on, uh, east, I'm sorry, east, north, okay? And that's inevitably going to come. We are slowly cutting down on some of our other overrides and stuff. The cost of those are going down. Why not, I mean, I know this sounds a little bit, I don't know the word for it, but outrageous, but why not start another build now so that 10 years from now, at least it's half paid off?
And you get a new building.
And you get two new buildings that will serve the purpose of the town's people. They're not, they're not for a select group of people. They're for everybody. The Town Hall is open to everybody. The public meetings are open to everybody who has an appeal or something else, or the Selectmen's meeting is open to every issue that's going on, and you've certainly got plenty of issues ahead of you that are more important than us. I mean, you've got 140, 123. You've got the whole water problem, which was brought up at my meetings, which I have no idea why the water problem was brought up, but I guess they figured we're an open forum meeting. You, you know, our biggest problem in town, and I've lived in town 45 years, is we don't have industry in town to cut down the tax rate. We've got individual homes. Okay, we have a lot of condos in big departments, but, I mean, we have family residences. We should be having an industry in town to take up the slack of this tax rate. We're trying with the Star Industrial Park, you know, there's other places that, you know, that should be the major thing to study, not, and I'm getting a little personal, so we'll just leave it that way. But, you know, those are the big topics in town. You know, 140, 123. I had trouble getting out of South Worcester Street plus getting into here tonight. The water problem always comes up, and I know there's an issue with how much control the Selectmen have of the Water Department, but let's try to get some industry in here and get the tax, I mean, you've got them paying taxes, and I won't get into the cranberry bug, solar panel thing, but anyways, that's my presentation. Do you have any questions or additions, as he always does?
I don't know how you can have any additions to that, Jim. That was pretty complimentary. So we, we haven't met with you at all about your desire to delay the vote, so I think what would be good for us to hear is where you're coming from beyond the cost. I mean, obviously, we, we would like the cost of the project to be half of what it is, but you didn't give us a budget when you appointed the committee, and it's a need, needs-based project based on the assessment of the feasibility study. So, you know, what's your perspective and help us understand where you're coming from?
From what I've heard, members of the Board are concerned.
You want me to interpret for you?
Yeah.
You can do sign language for us.
From my perspective, I've heard members of the Board who have gotten feedback, and they're concerned about the, maybe the lack of support that the project has. We're concerned about a comfort level, especially from, for myself, from the Building Committee on going forward and having the votes. Members of the Board are concerned about, not so much the Town Meeting, but the election itself, which which costs just under $10,000, I'm told. And they're afraid of spending money on something that they're concerned about passing. And we're looking, personally, I'm looking for a comfort level from the building committee about going forward. And, I mean, I can only speak about what I've heard. Myself, personally, I think we should go to the vote. You've appointed a committee. The town meeting initially put the money aside for the studies. So the town meeting has either directly or through us, uh, indicated they wanted the studies done. And so in my opinion, they asked for the studies that they, the information should be brought back to them and they should make a decision. I can understand people being concerned about the loss of $10,000, but in the, the big scheme of things, what we've spent on this project already, it's not a huge investment. And what, you know, what kind of a dollar value do you put on people's right to vote on the subject? And I mean, that's my personal opinion, but I'm only one member of the board.
So Mr. Bramwell, actually, your, your idea was very prudent a couple of years ago where we got the, um, permitting fees from Alnylam. And you recommended to take that million and a half dollars and put it in a separate account for this purpose. And then the town meeting voted, um, to allocate, I think it was a hundred, $200,000, something like that, for this particular purpose, a feasibility study. Now, the $10,000 for the election, I don't know why that can't come out of the same pool of money that's already been allocated for the project. Um, so it would not affect, you know, the operating budget this year or whatnot. And, um, and that was almost two years ago. And then we formed, you know, the committee, which the school committee and the Board of Selectmen appointed us to do a job. We did the job over the last year and a half. I presented it back to you. We were not given a budget on what the total project had to stay under. So as I mentioned before, it was based on the feasibility study and the assessment and the interviews and the surveys and such, and cost comparison against other similar projects. And the, obviously, all, um, supported by the experts, the architects that did the cost estimating. So like I mentioned, it would be nice if it was cheaper, but it's not. It has a lot of elements built into it. Uh, site costs are significant on this site. This site is an ideal site, although it may not be an ideal location. I understand that, but the site itself is very pretty, uh, adjacent to the water, provides a lot of recreation as well. It, uh, can, you know, provide for both buildings to be built together. Plenty of parking. Um, so the, the site and the architects indicated, you know, is really perfect for this type of project. Acknowledging that the location is not perfect, but this is what we had to work with. So I agree with you that, uh, you know, up until a week ago, you know, we, we gave you a letter about a month ago recommending, you know, that we go forward and that you set up a ballot vote in a, in a town meeting, special, special town meeting. I think you approved it unanimously back then, the five-member Board of Selectmen. So nothing's changed on our side. You know, we were tasked to do this, uh, job. We did it. We presented it to the Board of Selectmen in full approval. You set the dates, um, for the, uh, election and the town meeting. So if you're asking if anything has changed on our side of the table, it hasn't. Our position is still the same. So if you want to try to, and, and the political questions really reside with you anyway. We don't get involved in the politics, you know, as far as the votes and the election and the timing and what happens first. You know, that's really the Board of Selectmen. So I'll defer, I'm sorry, I don't want to speak for you, Jim, but we'll, we'll defer to however you want to, uh, to go forward.
I think that the, the meeting, let the people vote. Let them say what they want. The other one, pay for it. That's where it should go. Anyway, we've done our job, right? We have, right? The selectmen gave us the time for, for a special town meeting. Let the people come out. Let them vote. If they say no, then it's no. If they say yes, we continue. Simple, it's not that hard.
It's, it's not that hard, but we want it to be successful.
Of course.
And we don't feel like right now it will be. And cost is a big issue. And, and I understand you weren't given a budget. You know, I'd like to know what your discussions were on, on comps specifically. I mean, Foxborough put in a town hall for just under $8 million. You know, that was, they initially thought it was going to be 8.3. It came back at 7.4.
But the, the Foxborough Town Hall was built on town property. All the utilities were there. The town hall is smaller than what they want. I've been there. I've been there. I talked to Richeal, who's the town manager. They don't have the conference rooms. They don't have the space that they want.
But is it, is it, but again, so I'm going to go back to wants versus needs. So my biggest concern is you guys did a, a great job at the information session, right? You heard a lot of issues about the cost, but you didn't look back to say, okay, what, what can we take out of this? And I think, and, and I'm going to use your example of, of, you know, it's no longer a shelter. It can't be used as a shelter. So think about the cost for a generator. Think about the operational cost.
But we don't know.
It is. It's included, but what I'm saying is, is you heard feedback about the cost being high. So what, what I would do is sit back down and say, okay, out of this, what can we do to bring that cost down so we get the support of the community? And that can be one item to say, look, let's take it out. We, we have a shelter. We have a, a warming and cooling center that we can use already in town. So where do we minimize those costs so that this project has a better likelihood of succeeding?
I cannot give you a price without looking at a set of plans. I need a set of plans, a design in front of me that I can say, okay, we can cut this, we can cut that, and we can do this. That's where you're going to save your money. Without the plans being in front of us, we don't know. That's the truth.
So part of the feasibility couldn't be to pick out the things that, that weren't necessary?
Everything in that feasibility study is needed.
I think to directly answer your question, I'll answer it about the shelter thing because that was something I asked of it. It's just a use of the building. This cafeteria wasn't built to be a shelter, but it can be because, well, it doesn't have a generator. But it has a cafeteria. It has stuff available to it. The scene, the new scene, the old senior center does not have a generator. So it can't be used. Power station's next to it. When we lost power, people showed up at the senior center. We had no power. The building will be there. We added no extra square footage for any of those things. It's just in it, you're using an example we used for the multipurpose of the building to come back at us at cost. And that multipurpose use of the building is not a cost factor. The building will be there. The generator will be there. One of the uses of the building and the reason for calling it a community building is a shelter. There is no added cost being a shelter. And, and I'd like to answer the other question about delaying it. If you remember correctly, we had a timeline at the very, and I don't know if it went public or whatever, but it was at our public meetings. We had a timeline that we wanted to get this done. We realized the need for the two buildings. They were needed five years ago. They're not needed five years from now. They're needed five years ago, okay? We, our original timeline, we had an October time for the October town meeting. We did not meet that timeline. We then wanted a March town meeting. Mr. Kimball came in and persuaded us to change the March time meeting to June. I don't think there's a person in this room, I don't think there's a person in any of the presentations that will change their mind. 25 million is 25 million. There is nothing we can cut out of either one of the buildings. If you want us inferior product, then we will give you an inferior product for a cheaper price. But we're looking at the future of the town, the future needs and what's needed. We, there's, there's nothing that can be cut, that I know of, that can be cut out. I mean, we don't have any storage in the town hall. There's no area for storage. That's because everybody's saying everything can go on computer. Well, there's some things that can't go on computer. I think the planning maps or something may be able to, but some of those people have to come in and that's added expense for the town down the road. But there's no storage in the new town hall. Go ahead, Mike.
I was just going to say, I think you understand the people are looking for cost cutting. And I think the next phase is where the cost cutting happens. This is a maximum price.
It'd be in the, in the design?
There's no design. This is just a schematic.
I mean, I can't, I can't give you a person. I don't design.
When you go to the next phase and you hire an OPM and architects and the building committee sits down and sees the cost of each of the different items, well, we don't need this. We don't need this. We don't need, same as Foxborough did to bring their cost down under the 8 million. It would be the same with the building committee. At the next phase, the price, they'd work on that.
But we can't do that without a vote. Saying, continue.
If I can answer that.
Go ahead, Sir Chris.
So the building commissioner of the town. So this building has to be constructed to a level one standard. It's a level one building. Police, fire, municipal buildings. So when the hurricane or when the flood comes through, this building is going to stand. So there are certain costs, elevated costs associated with that. Um, as for the meeting rooms, I, you know, we need to have those in order to bring business into the town. So I don't see us cutting much out of that.
The town is growing. It's growing like crazy and the town hall is a little tiny dump. It really is, all right?
I, I agree with you.
You gotta, you gotta have something that can come into this town. The town is growing like crazy and we have nothing. The senior citizens, I go there, I've been there twice. I'm ashamed to go over there. There's no room for me and I'm small.
Nobody's disagreeing in needing the building.
I mean, I know it's a lot of money. I know it is, all right?
Okay, Bob, and then this woman over here next.
Mike, you had mentioned before, there might be some monies available or there might be some monies that were not used that's in the, that's in the bid. And some of that monies might be to lower the 25 million. And you don't know that until, like you said, the next phase where if it gets approved, um, what you get for quotes and what you can negotiate with.
Right now, um, we have a commitment of a donation of 1.6 and, um, we have 1.3 left in the fund. So there's 2.9 right there. And, um, we'll also obviously be looking for grants and, uh, and the, uh, support we can get from our state.
My point is though, you don't know that. So you don't know that today. But we do know that there's going to be some, some sort of financial help.
Right. This young lady over here.
First of all, I'd like to know, um, race dance. Who's been in this senior center at all? Is there anybody that has not been in there?
No.
Okay. You really should stop in there and visit it, okay? Safety. We have seniors in there. Safety. And I understand you're saying that it's not, you know, you're not saying no directly, but a delay in it, as we all know, when we delay projects, when it gets done eventually, it costs more. So we either need to do something now to make a decision or it's just going to cost us more at the, in the long run. It just is. It makes sense. But if you haven't been to the senior center, you really should go there. I don't think a lot of people here would like their parents to be there. It's safety, very unsafe.
Then you, then you have.
I'm glad I embarrassed the gentleman next to the building commissioner because he half raises his hand. Did you want to say something?
No, no, no.
Okay, Bob.
The other thing is the town hall. Now, I've lived in town since 72 and I've been down to the town hall a lot. I hear a lot of talk, we all know that we need to have industry move into the town. I want you to like contractors and people go into the town hall. You don't even have room to have a conversation and have your presentation of what they intend to do. And it's an embarrassment to this town. It's unsafe. It's an embarrassment. And if we want to grow and we want to have industry come in here, we need to show them that, hey, you know, we're a town and we're going to grow and show them. But the town hall is terrible.
Nobody is disagreeing in that fact.
But you've got employees working in the town hall.
They, they shouldn't be there. And, and you know what? That's a responsibility on us. We should have done something five years ago because there is a Plan B. There's always a Plan B.
Plan B is do it now.
Maybe we split them up and put them in different town buildings temporarily. There, there is always a Plan B. There's always a Plan B. I'm not, I'm not, yeah, it's not.
The other problem is we don't have other town buildings other than schools. And I don't want to cross this bridge because it's the big elephant in the room. Because every time I mention schools, strike, lightning comes down and strikes me. But, you know, if you're planning on using some of the school buildings to put some of the other departments in, I don't think Mr. Vieta, Superintendent Vieta, whatever respectfully he should be addressed as, um, will let you use it because we have tried, senior center has tried, the selectmen have tried for over 10 years to get to multi-use some of his buildings.
And that wasn't where I was going with it.
But, well, what other, you don't, the interstructure in the town, there is none. We have schools, new fire, a new police station. That's the only buildings we have that are new. We don't have a town hall, new town hall. We don't have a new senior, community center that we could use if there was a fire in, I don't know, in the water department down on, where would they move? They, they could move into the senior center into one of the offices there. I know Beth wouldn't like it, but, you know, it's yours, it's a town building and it's run by the selectmen.
And I use the same example. If we had a fire today in the town hall, where would we put people?
You'd be in trailers.
You can't wait five years.
If, if the state building inspector comes down and says, you can't be in that building, you're going to have to find a place to go.
Right.
And you'll be going in trailers like half the small towns in Bristol County do. They go into these trailers that you pay enormous rent spot over the years when you could have been paying for a building.
We never had a chance to get Plan A through. You're looking for Plan B. We haven't had a chance to get Plan A even started.
I, I think Plan B should have happened five years ago. That's what I'm saying.
Oh, I agree.
And to nobody's, nobody's fault by any means, but.
But it's passed. We're here now. You appointed a building committee. The building committee did its due diligence, I think. More than did its due diligence. I mean, we, we've traveled to other towns and everything else. We've given multiple requests. I don't think that half the people I, well, two-thirds of the people I see in, everybody in this room, I've seen before meetings. So if somebody's interested, they had more than a good chance to be here. Let's put it to a vote. Let's get it done, get it over with. If they don't want it, then you ask, come back to us as a building committee and say, we want to go the cheap route. Give us a space metal building or something and that's what we'll do for a million dollars and that's what you'll have to live with.
So let, can I just ask you, what were your opinions So, let me, look, can I just ask you, what were your opinions when it came back at 25 million?
Didn't surprise me. I'm in the building trade. Didn't surprise me a bit. Nope.
So, talking to other towns, and, and again, I use Foxborough as an example, right? Under eight million. I'll even use for the community center, if it's around seven million, you know, they're putting in a regional dispatch center for around seven, eight million dollars that has by far more infrastructure than the community center will have. Like, I just, when I think, when I hear that comparatively, like, that to me causes some problems.
But are you comparing apples to apples, or apples to oranges?
Well, I'm comparing town hall to town hall. Eighteen million to seven.
We went to expert architects. We didn't go to Mickey Mouse down the street to get these estimates. They're, they're logical estimates from people that are in the business. I don't think they jacked up the prices because they felt we were a million dollar community.
Now, this is two years now. Not now, it's two years from now.
Uh, this lady was first, and then Mike.
I feel as though, as, as a homeowner and taxpayer, I should have the right to decide and make a vote of what I want, okay? Just like everybody has the right. If it's not favorable, then we get it. We know what people want and don't want. We should be able to vote, and let us make that decision. It's not other people make decisions, we're us financially. That's our decision. People.
I think we all agree with that.
Right, we did. Why do we try to take this off?
We're not trying to take it off. We're saying we, we want it to be successful. From what we're hearing now, we don't feel like it's going to be.
Well, nobody, nobody, because of the past history of the town, we were well aware of this. I'll tell you, I was very shocked when the money came, because I know what the past overrides have done, and they've all failed, and, but I think that the people in Norton are smart enough to realize that it's time, we need interstructure, we need these buildings, and Chief Sliker is next.
What have you been in town?
Years, years, years.
I remember, years ago, when they had, wanted to have a tri-county sewer system. We voted no. Okay? Because we couldn't afford it. Because we couldn't afford it. But you know what? Plan B? We're afforded now.
Right, missed opportunity.
And it's, and it's, I'm, that's exactly what I'm saying, missed opportunity, Plan B. And that's what's going to happen. So, don't take it unless the people vote.
But I don't think anyone is saying, let's delay this a year. I think we're talking a matter of a month or two to do a bit more due diligence, bring in a third-party estimator to validate the 25.7 million that's going to be, see what.
You can have, you can have people come in and give you validation of other things. They had, we had a study done, and like you said, there were a bunch of different people that come in and voted, and gave estimates.
There's only one firm that gave a.
Two, two architects gave estimates.
Yeah, they were. For each individual building.
But their, but their square foot cost came very, very close, right?
Yeah.
We also, they also looked at the other places that they built, and the cost to build those and the size of them.
So, I think we support, we want these buildings to pass. We want to give them the best chance. I personally feel that being able to go back and do a bit more due diligence, validating the cost a bit more, see what economies could be given by combining these into a single project. So, Jimmy, you had mentioned hoping that is a bidder that does both.
The way, the longer you wait, the more it's going to cost.
Okay, I, I've got two people that wanted to speak. Chief Sliker had my next intention, get it.
So, I just, I just wanted to comment on a couple of things. First, we got in the shelter or not shelter thing. When the high school was being renovated, and Kevin, you can verify, it was a six-figure adjustment if we wanted to try to make the renovated high school into a shelter at that time, and we decided to walk right away from that, because we did have the middle school as our main shelter if we had a localized disaster and we had to open something up. Very pricey to open up the local shelter as a shelter. It does involve a lot of manholes, both custodial staff, things like that there as well. So, the current trend now is to go to a regional shelter. We're working on trying to get the new building in Blas, that set up as a regional shelter for these hurricane or these winter storms kind of a deal. But that said, people don't want to travel a whole lot, especially during storms or anything like that when they have issues. So, the current trend is to get away from the term shelter and use the warming station or cooling station and the heat wave when people are losing power and having heat issues. So, the place has got to be designed with a generator regardless of how we do it, because if not, then it changes all the rules as far as additional costs to actually install emergency lighting and things like that that have to come on with battery packs, maintenance issues that way. And the building has to be vacated when you lose the power. You're only allowed, I think, up to 90 minutes or something like that of occupancy on that non-generated standby power, whereas if the building is fully generated, then you can actually still utilize the building. So, just to kind of clarify and make that a little bit maybe straightforward regarding a shelter versus food, so either way, the buildings are designed with a generator that has cost savings and allows us to utilize by us. And when I have a problem, I remember going to get all the bottom heads together to declare a state of emergency when there's a disaster coming, a hurricane coming, we actually meet in the town hall to do that stuff. So, so we want the building to be a little resilient, like the building commissioner said. Secondly, just to comment on the regional dispatch. I am a firm driving force behind that from day one. I spilled the beans at a Fink Fund meeting, I think initially, you know, we headhanded it, we, we already mentioned it before, it was supposed to be out there. But that is a solid building that's already there. It is a bulletproof, it's a, it's actually one of these Cold War buildings. It's fully built, it's fully there. The millions they're spending is strictly on renovating inside of it and bringing in the technology and stuff. So, it's very hard to boldly wrap that into anything that ties into here, because this is a Sukta, not, you know, Ginyul, that site and everything else. I just wanted to point that out.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Like, and I've got to just fade away and not speak tonight, so.
Hey, Jim.
I'll go to Mike, who's had his hand up longer than you.
All right, I think Kevin may be going to answer that question. I was just wondering, I think you had the, the architects hired estimators to correct the price.
Yes.
And what is the cost per square foot right now? And the two estimators came in close.
So, while he looks at the, so the architecture firm, I mean, their expertise are feasibility studies, you know, which is why we hired them for this particular piece of the project. Some architects are experts at construction documents, blueprints, some are experts at understanding the needs of the community, which these folks were through the interviews and surveys and the feasibility study. But they do have their own estimators in-house, but they also reach out to, which would be a fourth and a fifth party, independent estimator. So, the benefit of having two different architects is not only do we have them as a third party, they had their own resources as a fourth party, but we had two of them, and they compare their own cost per square foot. You know, for municipal buildings, of course, there's a difference between the senior center and the town hall when it comes to overall cost, but they, they validated and cross-referenced each other's work. So, I don't think it's going to change much. To the point about Foxborough, because people keep doing that comparison, that's a five-year difference when it comes to escalation, because their project was started three years ago. Ours is not going to be started for two years from now. So, five years, that's about a 20% difference just in the escalation cost alone. Now, if we had a building on, you know, land that we owned on 123 that had easy accessibility and hook up into town storage, that had no site work, and, you know, it would be quite a bit less expensive. Now, the, I had another cost element here in my mind.
Site work.
Oh, so the, yeah, the site work is significant, the utilities. Oh, this is, this is a big one. Somebody, the two architects worked on this particular site on Elm Street together. Somebody had to, to assume the entire cost of the site work. The town hall end of it is where all of that cost is lumped into. So, it's about 3.6 million dollars in demo work, removal of the existing building, site work, retaining walls, onsite septic system was deemed to be cheaper than tying it to any sewer line anywhere nearby. So, all of that cost, 3.6 million, was, shows up under the town hall cost, because somebody had to, you know, bear the expense of, of the site work. So, when you look at the 16 million, you gotta, you know, you gotta take 4 million of that as site work, you gotta throw the 20% factor in it when you compare it against Foxborough, and, you know, you have to look at things like, you know, the onsite storage system. So, if you do the comparison, you break it down like that, and we did that, you know, we would love to have a piece of land that the town owns that's right on 123, that's flat, that has very little site work, that can tie into town storage and build it for three years ago, but, but we can't. So, we're all pretty confident that the numbers are right. Now, going forward, just a historical perspective, actually. I was the chairman of the high school renovation project, and 10 years ago, when I was doing comparisons, and this is at the low point of the economy, I had misquoted in a meeting that the total cost, I was on the school committee at the time, would be about 20 million dollars, right? Just doing raw numbers, while not realizing the escalation, the contingency, all of the other costs, soft costs, design costs that get built into a project. So, sure enough, it came in after we went through the feasibility study of it being 34 million, which included an addition, which wasn't part of the original plan. But, you know, now you look back at that eight years back in history, and that was probably the best 34 million dollars we ever spent, because you look at Attleboro, you know, spending 250 million dollars. Granted, it's quite a bit larger, but the square foot cost for the Attleboro High School, you know, dwarfs what we end up paying to renovate our high school. So, what we don't want to have happen is with our town hall and our community center, is to miss this opportunity and look back at what the costs were that we were looking at now in 2019 and say, you know, why didn't we, you know, do the project then?
Can I, can I ask, is the, is the only reason why we have to wait two years because they have to clean up the site? Like, is there any chance that we can bring that, bring that date earlier and save someone?
I think, knowing, knowing how things work in town government, we have to go out for bid, we have to assess the bids, we have to approve the bids. It, it's not like building your house or putting addition on your house. You can't go out and hire a contractor tomorrow and have him start next Thursday, because it just doesn't work that way. Nothing works that way. Even the bidding, if you wanted a fire truck, it takes him a year and a half to get a fire truck. At least a year and a half, if you want to.
And by the way, the.
There's a guy in the back.
Well, one last thing. The, the Foxborough project, they had already done the feasibility study leading up to it, and they had the site already prepped and ready to go. They started construction the month after it was approved. Obviously, we don't have that, but I think, to answer your question, you know, over the next two and a half years worth of waiting for the site to be cleaned up, we're going to try to incorporate all of the design work and the preparation, the architectural, as well as the, the engineering work and what they call value engineering, to try to find the best value against what you're getting in return, so to keep the cost down. So, all of that work will be done leading up to construction, but to answer your question, yes, we're kind of, our hands are tied because we have to wait until January 2000 or '21 for the site to be ready.
And I don't think there's been put, any pressure put on the state to say, listen, I mean, they haven't been at the site for two weeks. Somebody said that they've driven by the site two or three times. I have two people in the audience, and Mark is well-known for one sentence answers. He has an answer to your question about square footage, and then I have the gentleman here and the gentleman in the green. Wait, wait, give me a minute. Mark's going to take a minute.
Are you going to do me? So, if you look at the 26 million, if you pull out just the cost of the building, the building itself, and the escalation over two years, it's $598 a square foot for the town hall and $530 a square foot for the community center. That's just the construction of the building and escalation.
Okay, that's a definitive answer. Doesn't require a question.
Yeah.
This gentleman here.
If the stretch code passes at the town meeting, you know, is that affecting the cost of the project at all, and so how much will it affect?
I didn't hear the first.
If the stretch code passes in today's meeting, will that affect the cost of the project?
No, will not affect the project at all.
At all?
Not at all. The gentleman in the green.
We have another one.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry. The, the donation that the town got, this anonymous donation?
Yes.
Is that going to remain anonymous at all, or we have to?
I would assume so. The person asked for it to be anonymous, it's anonymous.
I saw that with me as a part.
Why, do you want to give another 1.6?
No.
I mean, we'll put your name on a robe if you want.
What I'm saying is, is it a person, is it a business? I question it.
I, I think in the, in the spirit of being anonymous, I think that we just take the gift and walked away. I mean, if the person asks to be anonymous, then let's.
Do we need to tell them what's wrong?
I'm sorry, you're going to have to do your own detective work.
I don't want.
Go ahead.
Currently, it seems like everybody who's knows anything here seems to think it's a really good idea to build this now, otherwise it's going to cost more later. But you go to a vote tomorrow, it's not going to pass. Right now, it needs to be sold to the town, because, you know, you guys have to get out and sell this idea, because right now, you just, you know, say, we need 25 million. You go, you know, up and down the street, you're going to get a bunch of no's.
Well, that's, that's the feeling of one side of the picture. The other side of the picture, and most of us are pretty well, and I'm at a loss for words, think that it will pass, that, that the people in town are smart enough. I mean, we have had more than enough public hearings. I mean, my, my personal feeling about this, and I mentioned, nobody came to my door for, for elections, and everybody does social media, I'll be out there, I'll, I will get a mailing list of some group of people. I'm sure the senior center is going to be pushing for their end of the, there are at least 50 employees in the town hall. I don't know how many are from town, and I don't personally care. Mike, you can vote six times, because I know you're not from town. But I think that, that we have done, if you are interested, and the problem is getting people interested.
That's it.
And, and nothing against the two of you, but you ran a social media camp, as far as I'm concerned, a social media campaign, because I was never personally contacted. In the past, Mr. Ramwell, where are you hiding on me? Has gone around, shook hands, and done the old-fashioned political route. If that's what we have to do, I know that's what I'm going to do, because I want it, I want it successful. I want to see my name on a plaque in the building, okay? And before I die, there will be a plaque in the building with my name on it.
And point to the, the particular site, that has the unique feature of having a pond and a dam right there. Why don't we, instead of like worrying about solar panels and who might object to it, why don't we just put a little hydroelectric thing? There's your generator. I mean, that.
I mean, that's, that's another project for another day. If I can get the building there, I will be absolutely happy. And you can be on the committee for a hydroelectric plant on the pond, okay? I thought your question was going to be the flood plain, and I'll answer that question because I'm bringing it up. We are above the flood plain for that pond, and, and there is no, we're not putting a cellar in either one of the buildings, so it, it will be safe during a disaster or flooding. So, I didn't see any other hands.
Yeah, no. So.
I recognize you.
You probably get my name wrong. You have for the last year and a half. So, to your point.
You said Diana twice.
To this gentleman's point, you know, this is what we're doing today. We're out here in the community. I mean, and you said a small group that showed up. The purpose of tonight, as well as half a dozen other meetings like this, is to display the project and talk about it. And, you know, we need to get out in the community and, you know, and meet with people. Ironically, not ironic, coincidentally, that's the, the purpose of tonight's meeting. You know, I, I'm not convinced that if the project was 20% cheaper, it would have any better chance of passing. I'm not political, but from general overrides that we've had in the past, every time we come back the second year or lower, it, it loses by a wider margin. So, that's logic that I don't really buy into, being right in the middle of political campaigns in the past, as well as the one with the high school that I was right, you know, right leading. So, I don't know if that's the case, but it, I would rather have the project move forward and the selectmen allow a vote and have it fail than to delay it, the vote, six months, because at, at least then we know where we stand, and we can go back to the drawing board and look at different alternatives, and maybe do one project and not both. But, you know, we'd have to do another feasibility study, get some more money approved, because the one we already paid for is done. They, they, you know, they did what we paid them to do. But I would rather have it go forward and lose than delay the, the vote and not know where we stand and not have a Plan B for six months.
So, so Kevin, I think your point is well taken, that if it failed, like the overrides, the first one failed, the second one failed worse. I think that's what Renee, Renee and I are concerned about, is if this proposal fails, what chance does a second one have? That's why we want the first one to be as solid as possible, to put the full weight of everybody behind it, because we all believe in the town hall and the community and getting it done. So, that's where this is coming from. It's not to denigrate the work that you've done. I know what it takes to, to go through this process and to meet with people, and I value everything you've done, you've done to this point. We want it to be successful. So, I don't want it to fail in June and then have to come back in six months and have to have all that dead weight on our back.
Well, it's not going to fail in June, so.
Well, I mean, even if it does, I mean, there are, there are other options. We could split the projects up, have two different articles, let the people vote on one or the other, or both. The, the political decision is yours. You kind of know where we stand. So, if you feel strongly about that, it's the board of selectmen who make the political decisions on votes and elections, so I'd rather you not postpone it, but.
What would you recommend to get the word out?
Well, I would certainly recommend the mailing, because I talked to somebody this week who had not heard about the project or the cost.
Well, if you're into town, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I said I recommended. Jim had mentioned about a mailing, and I, I encourage that we do a mailing so that we hit more people in the town, because I did talk to somebody this week who had not heard about the project, you know? And then again, when you hear about it the first time and you hear 25 million, and what's that going to cost me as a taxpayer, right? Immediately, before turning away and shutting down. down.
I'm sorry, I...
Do the mailing before, Jim?
I get...
Do the mailing before...
I get really upset at the people who are blissfully ignorant of what's going on, i.e. the solar panel, people on Bay Road. Everybody said they didn't know about it, everybody said they didn't do it. We had a town meeting three years ago to get the 1.5 million dollars. If you were interested, we had a town meeting. That started the informational session. We've had seven informational things. If you sat back and for whatever interest you did not have in what's going on in the town, I don't know how all of a sudden yesterday, Patti B. that you talked to, all of a sudden got an interest in the town hall when for the last three years, they were ignorant of what was going on.
It's not an interest, they didn't know about it. I mean, we've talked about communication, and yeah, we post things where they're supposed to go, but you can't blame people for being busy or not being on social media, not being at every town meeting that we have. I mean, tonight's a perfect example. We have like six meetings going on, right? People can't be everywhere. I'm encouraging you that if you can do a mailing specifically before that special town meeting, to do it, to try to hit the biggest population that you can, because you need the community behind you to do this.
Okay, Chief Slyte has been waiting, and then I'll put the gentleman in.
I just, you know, Dr. Politics side of it, but having worked with Kevin O'Neill on a daily basis who have a whole high school project, totally impressed with the amount of effort he put in and anything he does, and having him sitting on the committee, I think gives so much credibility to what's going on there. And again, I think he's looking out for the best interests of the town. I'm almost getting a vibe that out of the clear blue and a sudden, looking at the breaks being put on, it sends a bad message to a good part of the town, instead of trying to like jump on board and really trying to rally and get the word out and stuff. And again, I do think that Kevin has really done due diligence, and I know for a fact from dealing with him in the school project, that he's frugal, that he really does what the really, like he says, value engineering. That was a new term that I wasn't aware of until I dealt with the school project with and stuff. And so, they really do, they try to really make a nickel where they get 10 cents worth of stuff out of and stuff. So, again, I just, again, applaud the committee for the work they've done and stuff. I really do think we probably should run a poll.
This gentleman, and then the gentleman in the back.
The current senior center is having two open houses with information for this to get out to the public, and it's also gonna be televised, and they are May 21st and May 30th at the senior center at 6:00 PM.
You're talking about getting word out to the public? I'm on a computer over there, about built two websites, and they're both costing no more than $10 a month. It's not expensive for somebody to put a website together and put the word on what they're working on, and put pictures up, and put documents up. That's growing with the world of the public. So, maybe when somebody comes up and they've built these projects, they've put these projects to the town, have a little website for a few months, it's not very difficult to get on, and I'm on a very good computer, but I can...
It's on the town's side.
It's not expensive to run a website for a year or so.
It's all the information.
Yes, you...
It's all posted.
With all due respect, I guess I'm questioning this sort of informal feedback that some of you are getting, people don't want it. There are always people who are more vocal than others, and there's always a phenomenon of sticker shock, et cetera. It seems to me the best opinion poll is the vote, to see what people actually want to do. And it's not gonna significantly get any cheaper to wait for, as has already been pointed out, six months from now, it's probably gonna be even more expensive. In the meantime, we're losing a strategic opportunity, I think, which has been pointed out, that we need industry in this town. This town is well below the average of what town should have for industry as far as tax revenue coming in. We're way below that. You can't run a town strictly on residential taxes. And it seems like, I would hope that you folks would be spending most of your time getting industry in here, and as was pointed out, if I were a company coming in here and I came into the town hall and maybe I had some elderly parents came into the senior center, I'd think, man, I don't know, maybe we ought to think about Mansfield or some other town. It's not... When we moved here 30 years ago, there wasn't even a stoplight in town. It was still a little village, there was a little flower pot in the circle there, that's long gone, the trucks have run over it, and things have changed. And there, along with change, there's certain things you gotta do. I mean, 30 years later, we had to replace our roof. I didn't want to do that, but you gotta do it. And the town is at that place where we gotta keep scalling on it. And I appreciate that some of the new folks amongst the selectmen getting on, catching up or whatever, but you can, I think you can tell that a lot of work has already been taken place on this, and a lot of examination and feasibility and due diligence, I mean, all the words that you want to use to make sure that you're getting the best deal here and to hold off on that. Let the town, it was the town that authorized to move forward on this and the project. They have the right, quite frankly, to do the vote, because they're the ones who asked for it, they funded it, and they have the right to come back and say, "No." If people say no, they say no. But it seems like out of this, the onus is on folks who are wanting this to happen. They go out and start communicating. That's what we need to do, is make sure people are up to speed on what this is all about and do whatever we gotta do, put it on social media or door-to-door or whatever those things are, to inform people, get them up to speed. This is what things cost today. Things aren't getting any cheaper. And this facility, particularly, I don't need both buildings, but, you know, I'm on the COA, that senior center, I'm sorry, is woefully inadequate building. You've got seniors who make up close to 25% of the population of this town, and this is what we offer them, this crowded little room. Sometimes I know Beth has had to have meetings in the kitchen, because their office has been used for something else. It's nonsense, it's ridiculous, and it covers more than just the seniors. There are folks who come in there for fuel help, for taxes. It's a multi-generational facility, and that's what we're saying. This is something that offered the town that's gonna not just impact the seniors, every generation is gonna be impacted by that. And to see folks trying to work out at that city hall, crammed in that little selectmen office that you guys made it, it's noise going on upstairs, people jam-packed in the rooms, it's crazy, it's nonsense, and it's time to move on.
Okay, I know we're supposed to behave political, but he brought up a good point. 25% of the town are senior citizens. Senior citizens will get out to vote. It's easy for us to get them, that's what makes me optimistic, okay? I realize the big elephant in the room, there's another settled population in town that has another feeling, but they've gotta change their feeling, what's good for the whole town, not for a small group, well, a small group, another majority. And this gentleman had a question. I'll come back to you. Go ahead.
I was just gonna key off of what you said about, let's connect the school. It's very likely that the members, you know, kids that go to school could come over to a community center and take advantage of some of the... Amongst the seniors, there's several hundreds of years of experience. Why not have a student be able to come over, sit down with somebody who's pursued a particular career, and to get some career advice, there's other activities where the students would benefit from this. And I'm sure, maybe you got hit by lightning maybe a little too, but...
I don't know, that's a compliment of mine.
I'm sure some of the people are thinking, "Well, we won't get our money for the school." The 30 years I've been here, this town has always bellied up when it comes to spending money on the schools. So, if that's a concern, I'm sorry, I don't buy that argument. The town is systematizing, you know, the high school, all the repairs, et cetera. The town has always come up, so if that's the concern, that somehow the funding isn't gonna be there for the school. And I know that Dr. Biyanis, how do you pronounce it? He's very creative when it comes to funding, I've seen him in action before, and that money will still be there in addition to this. I know the town is, will do that. I mean, as evidenced by the fact that the school budget is, what, 55% of the budget of the town? Come on, you can't say the town hasn't come through.
Okay, my man who keeps raising his hand, have a...
First out, a photo health agent. One thing I wanted to talk a little bit about is, with my experience with the current town hall, you know, there's a lot of times where we're dealing with enforcement situations that will upset somebody, and I've had, I recently had a woman, a resident, who had to put some enforcement orders on, that showed up to town hall in tears, and there's no place for me to take her to sit down and talk to her in private. There's not one place. I'm either out in the hallway where everybody can see me, or even in the selectmen's office that goes throughout the whole, upstairs and down, so that's a huge issue. The other issue we've had, and we brought up earlier, is flu shots. I stand up at my desk and I go around the corner, and the public health nurse has given somebody a flu shot, but their shirt hiked up, and, you know, it's like, really? You know, this is just ridiculous. The only question I wanted to ask, though, with regards to the cost of this, is do we know on the average of what the increase on some of these taxes would be per house?
Yes. I believe what it comes down to is, and I've worked it out so it sounds like the less, least expensive...
It's a little down.
Okay, if you want to...
Jim, we got it.
I like my number better than yours. I say $75 a quarter.
For a house of 300,000, the first year is $280.59, and then it goes down. The 10th year would be $213.60, and year 20 would be $154 a month.
$125 a month, it raised from the taxes.
$70 a quarter.
$125, so that month, you just don't go to, out to dinner that month, you know? It's not like this is thousands, that's my...
The town is always, I've been in town all my life, I'm 80 years old. Every time I've seen the finance committee come up, they never have enough money. Fire department comes up, they want more money. The police department wants more money, all right? The school department wants a lot more money, all right? So, we never have enough money to make it all the way around, but we still pay taxes and we still pay for the school and the fire department and the police department. We manage, we always have. So, this thing, I would like to see it devolved, out to the vote. Let's see what happens.
You don't know the day of the 79th.
I mean, I don't think there's anybody denying the need. I think if we had a vote on the need, we'd get 100% vote on the need. It's the money. Go ahead.
But I just also want to say that we have a really phenomenal human service department in this town that I oversee, and we help everybody who comes in this, through the door. So, if someone is struggling, this town is phenomenal about banding together and helping people in the south. We will do that, we will do that for our neighbors. We have, we're doing it now, we'll do it.
Yes, ma'am.
The gentleman with the grumish jacket, who's right there, I found him to be very, very concise, persuasive, and full of excellent information. I would love to see him on a video for everyone if he has to.
Just go to...
But I think that is the kind of short, sweet information that people who aren't sure what they're going to do need to hear.
I think you have a new parishioner, Mr. I Wanna Maker.
I'm happy to help. I think it's an important thing that we're talking. Real important for the town.
I mean, we're more than willing to go to any group of people, if you're gonna hold a tea in your house, as long as you have white cake cupcakes, not chocolate. We're willing to come to your house and do a dog and pony show, any social organization. I mean, we want to get the information out there, because there's, you know, I think one of the things that really hurt us was the guy that got up with the square footage number, and everybody respected him because he was a contractor and thought he was, I mean, he did know what he was talking about, but he was comparing apples to oranges again, as far as I'm concerned, because we're using a government-built building versus a house.
Residential.
Residential, you know, private contract. And I think everybody is worried about the square footage cost, and within the little books that we have, is an analysis of the square footage cost, and it includes a walk-in building. I mean, it's not, it includes a septic, it includes everything that's needed to get the building done. There's no additional cost. And the problem we had is, we wanted to be open and transparent to everybody. We gave you the highest cost, but I do not think it's gonna be $25 million, okay? I don't think it's gonna be 10 either, but, you know, I don't think it's gonna be $25 million.
Let me ask Chris a question. Chris, the Wheaton College building they just built, the big brick building they built?
The new Wheaton...
The dorm, yeah.
Yep.
How big is that and what'd that cost on unionized labor?
It's union, and I'm sorry, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but I've had 500 falls in the air since then. I can research that.
I think it's around 20.
It's being built as a passive house.
Yeah.
So, it's extremely green, there's incredible amounts of insulation on it, and it's being projected to save them money in the long run.
Yeah.
So, if you look at the existing town hall, that we're, we have no insulation in the walls and the ceiling, single-pane glass, and what we're spending on heating and cooling for that building, and it's just going right out the window. A little that the building at Wheaton is gonna save them money in the long run.
That's it, these new buildings we're designing, I hope the design will be the same.
Well, the current ninth edition that this has been designed to is gonna meet the new stretch code, so it's gonna save us over the long run. And again, I think another point, while I have you, that really hasn't been emphasized tonight, is this building is being built for the next generation as well. It's projected growth, that was part of the study.
Yeah.
And that wasn't really hammered tonight. So, with the projected growth of the town, when we connect the water and sewer on Main Street and the commercial development going out on the north end of town, we're gonna need the municipal side, so this building is gonna meet our needs. You don't have the need right now.
Sir, you said that it might cost less than the 25 million. If it does, how do the average residents see that, feel that low price?
We wouldn't borrow the money if it was less.
We wouldn't borrow the money, and then the projected cost would be less on your tax rate.
So, monthly billing will be less, or...
Not like we're gonna mail you a refund check.
But I think what he's asking, Jim, is it, would we pay less over time, or would we pay the same amount of time, or...
I think it still would be a 20-year deal.
Mike, pay less, answer that.
When you do a project like this, you do temporary borrowing during construction, and then when the project is all done, as we did with the high school, you don't go out and permanently borrow until you know what the final cost is, and that's your final borrowing. You only take out temporary notes during construction to keep paying as the building goes along, but you don't borrow 25 million, you just borrow what you need as the project goes along, and when it's finished, you do the final borrowing. So, the authorizations are not to exceed, remember, it's not to exceed 25 million. And now, if you reduce that 25 million by the 3 million we know we have in a donation and money set aside and any other grants that we get, any value engineering, the final borrowing is just what the final cost is.
So, that we go by the residents in the monthly and the quarterly bills, because if you're moving, like, projected right now, that's what would be visible?
Right.
You know, it was, another big factor is the bond rate, because what's our rating right now for this town?
Double A minus.
What's that?
Double A minus.
Okay, and also, the rates are reasonable now overall, regardless of the bond rating, so, you know, you don't know about the future. Like, when we did the high school project, we actually came in cheaper because of the bond rate was real favorable, because we were at the end of a recession. You know, five years from now, you know, if the economy, something happens where rates go up, it's the same situation as with your mortgage. You know, you pay a 4% mortgage, you pay a 6% mortgage, it can have a big impact on your monthly payment. So, same thing with this project, you know, hopefully, the rates won't change that much over the next two and a half years, but that's always a risk factor, and hopefully, you want to get a project done while the rates are low and our bond rating is high.
So, just, can I just...
Sure, why not?
So, I think we all are on the same page, we want this to pass, and we want it to move forward, I think. So, anything that the committee can do to help the board get the word out? We're open to ideas. I like the mailing idea personally, if we can do that, Mike?
I do the media center idea, and I know you don't like social media, right?
Don't say I didn't like it. You don't participate.
Right. You don't do it, but you should look at that. I mean, because we may have run a social media campaign, but we went on that campaign. So, social media is hitting a lot of people in a very short amount of time.
Well, we scheduled another public informational session for the end of May at the cable news studio, so that'll be broadcast live, I guess, as well?
Yeah, do little, I would do some little snippets too, right? You have a fact document of specific questions, like, go in there, do a two-minute session. They'll be more than willing to do that, and I'm looking at you because you're now smoking.
He's the spokesperson.
Now, we're gonna set up a subcommittee of PR, and he will be our computer guy, he's gonna be our face of the committee.
And everything is put on the town website too, I believe there's a link there for the project. What's that?
Everything's posted.
Yeah, everything is posted, including the minutes and the diagrams and that kind of thing. I'm in favor of the, you know, social media as well, but the other day, I had a little relapse with that opinion when I posted the Sun Chronicle article. Is Steve Peterson here?
Yeah.
Okay.
He was, but he...
Winched, to our luck, right? We're making progress here, and he's not here to report on it, but he did report very, you know, completely on your selectmen's meeting, and that I posted on social media, and then I'm thinking to myself, I may have just turned some people against the project, so I immediately took the posting down, because I felt it was, you know, adversely affecting our chances here, because it was kind of negative from the board of selectmen's perspective. I wish we had had this meeting before. Steve reported on your discussions from last Thursday, but it is what it is, and, you know, hopefully, he captured enough from tonight's meeting that he can write a longer article.
Well, the other thing too is, it's good to get all the information out there, like the various opinions to do it. I mean, I posted today, this morning, I put your fact guide out there for people, you know, not knowing if they'd actually go to the town website. So, it's, you know, I can have my opinions, but that doesn't mean that I don't want to get the message out to the community, right? Like, we said before, we're here, we want this to be successful, we're just giving you the feedback that we've been hearing, and we've heard it, you know, for months. And unfortunately, there are people who haven't heard about the project, so that's why I'm hoping we can reach out to them.
Give me their names and address, and on their door, and stuff in a pamphlet in their ear.
Appreciate you guys meeting with us and having this dialogue. This has helped.
It did help.
I mean, we are your committee. I mean, that's what upset me about the article was, we're your committee, you delegated this project to us, we gave you our due diligence and transparency the best we could, yet it looked like you were questioning what we did. did. And what really blew our mind, and I've been told not to discuss this, was it was passed unanimously and then all of a sudden it was torn away. You know, how do the people get an idea of what's this going on when the head of our government is flip-flopping back and forth about what's, and it, you two people, I'm looking at you, but somebody over there. But it happened on the Prevery project. All of a sudden we're favored, we had a town meeting, then we flipped back and now we rescinded the, I mean, you've got to make up your mind and stick with your decisions. I mean.
But you have to, you have to remember too, Jim, like this $25 million wasn't out on the table the whole time. Right? So.
I believe, we've been talking 25 million for at least a year, at least. And is five or six people in this room that's attended?
Was there some public information session? Was there one before March, like an official? Or was it just you going to the board?
I don't have a timeline of when we, but I know for a fact, we've talked 25 million for at least a year.
So what's, so sorry, at the, at the, at the meeting at the high school, Mr. Kimball said that 25 million, that was the number he was hearing for the first time that night. And I think that kind of caught Renee and I off guard.
Okay. He's not here to defend himself.
And I know, and I don't need to.
But we met with the selectmen a month before that.
We presented the whole thing with the.
And gave them that number. And if you want to check the selectmen's minutes.
For our minutes.
You can see that we gave them that number. So there's some misinformation from the.
February 23rd.
So that was the first time this February? So I think you have to respect that, you know, obviously people are now going to question. And you have, you have to allow for that dialogue to happen. Right? We learn more about projects and opinions change. I mean, you gave a perfect example of the Bay Road.
Okay. Any other questions?
Where do we stand? Where do we stand? I guess you guys can do your own thing.
Well, I guess, and I'll speak for the board. I think we are putting the football in your playing field. We want this to go to the town meeting and the vote. It's up to you to decide what you want to do.
Yeah. I have, I mean, I don't know how about, I just feel I have no objection to that. Like that's, that's give the opportunity to the town. I, you know, like I said, I encourage you to get the message out more and answer the questions and, and, you know, talk more about the issues that other folks have because I think that's, that's going to be a big hurdle.
And if that town hall is built, it'll get your picture on the wall with your name under it.
Thank you.
So try to get Jason to run this like all day long, 24 hours for the next two months. Because I mean, people watch this video alone for the last hour and a half. Hopefully that'll change their opinion.
Yeah. But at least there weren't interruptions from upstairs. And if I may, Kevin, get back on social media because I don't do it. So you're the only hope.
You don't, you don't do it either?
No.
Why are the people on this side of the room who were over seven hours?
Well, so let me, let me just, let me just say something about that. When we had the high school building committee, there were 13 members of the committee. As a building committee, you need to remain somewhat impartial to politics. We had a whole separate group, the SOS group, who were the marketing arm behind the project. They were the ones that reached out to the community. They were the ones that developed the social media. They were the ones that distributed the flyers. They had the funds to do that. They were a nonprofit organization. You can't rely on the four of us to do that, just like I couldn't rely on the building committee to do that 10 years ago. So when you talk about we need to get the message out, we're going to continue to do what we did tonight. And we've done with half a dozen other meetings like this. But it really needs to be a groundswell approach, like we mentioned many times, especially with the seniors in town that have a vested interest in it and the town employees that live in town and don't live in town. You have people coming to the, to the town hall and you're a town employee, you know, you need to speak to the needs, you know, you have in the building itself as a professional and as visitors that come to the town hall. We're not going to sell this project. The whole community will or won't. And we have a limited ability when it comes to, you know, political action committee. We're not that. So.
I only picked on you because you admitted that you have used it.
I was, yeah.
There are some of us, just hands up.
Yes. But you remember being, you were on the high school building committee. You remember that whole group that came to all the meetings?
Oh, yeah.
Took all the notes, disseminated the information. Yes.
We can put up information about the cost and what it will cost a resident and any other information. Just can't promote it. That, as Kevin said, we can't promote a vote. It'd have to be a private resident.
Where's your flag for the SOS group?
Yes. What's that?
Where's the flag for the SOS group? Are they around?
I don't know. I've been out of touch a lot.
I just wanted to make a comment. In fairness to you guys, I understand your frustration in the fact that you had it unanimously from the board of selectmen and you got a message from our meeting last week that may support, wasn't there. But also in fairness to the two new selectmen, they're coming into it at the end. And of course, they had a lot of questions about the project. So I actually want to thank you for allowing us to come into your meeting tonight. Like Renee said, a couple minutes of good discussion is always good. I'm not sure if all of their questions were answered. Hopefully they were. Hopefully questions were answered that the public will now have access to. From my point of view, I actually feel that we should go forward with the timeline that we have. And I think all of you guys for all the effort they put into it.
That being said, Chair will stand motion to support moving forward with this project to go to vote on citizens. All with favor?
Aye.
Aye. Commanders?
Great. Thanks, buddy.
That sounds good, doesn't it?
Anybody out there who's into social media, help them out because I certainly can't.
Let's set you up, Brad. Let's make it a new.
I don't think so. My grandchildren have something I can use my phone. Yeah, I have my grandchildren. I still got a flip phone.
Do you have your journal?
Oh, I won't steal a damn thing.
Second?
All with favor?
Aye.
Thank you for.